Because it will not look, it doesn't look very good. That will be published in, I forget what that's called again, it's not Happenings, what is it?
It's the Hometown Values.
Hometown Values, thing that will come in the mail to everyone in Ogden and I believe some in Weber County, I'm not sure how far that's going. And she has pushed it and publicized it a great deal, so people are using it, so that's an avenue for you. There's also an orange card over there with a QR code on it. If you know someone who needs to register to vote and they still can register right now, have them scan on the code and go in and register real quick. Anyone 16 or older can register to vote. If they'll be 18 by the 21st, they can vote in this election. If they're 16, they register when they turn 18, they'll get a ballot in the mail, they'll already be registered to vote. So if you have kids or anybody that you know needs to be registered, encourage them to do so. Am I gone?
No, you're on.
Okay, for a minute I thought I had left the world. Let me tell you a little bit about the format. We are live streaming this on our Facebook page. It's Weber County League of Women Voters. And hopefully we will be successful and it will also appear on YouTube under West Haven Debate. So, and that'll take us a day or two, but we hope that will happen. Okay, the protocol is first, two minutes, each candidate gets to tell you a little bit about themselves, why they're running, their family, whatever they want to let you know. Then they will be asked some questions, some from you, some from some homework we have done on issues that are out here. And they have a minute and a half to answer those questions. The last, at the last, they'll have a minute and a half to just wrap up and tell you why to vote for them. Each, we'll go in each, start with each person vacillating so that it's even. The thing about the League of Women Voters that isn't, again, with some of the other debates that are held, is we are completely nonpartisan. I don't expect you to, or them, to talk anything about a party. This is a nonpartisan election anyway, so that works nicely. Okay, ready? Let's start here with Carrie, two minutes, tell us, oh wait, I gotta take out the time. Jayden's sitting out here and he has paddles. When 30 seconds is all you have left, he will hold up that paddle. And at the end of your time, he'll pull up, stop, and we ask that you stop, so that everything's fair. Okay, all right, go ahead, Carrie.
My name's Carrie Call, I'm currently on the council. I have lived in West Haven for almost 30 years. My husband and I have five children. We live on a small three and a half acre farm with our kids and animals and all sorts of things. We love being here, we love the country atmosphere, that's why we wanted to be here. My family's been here, I went to Fremont, I went to Weber State, so I've kind of kept where I've been for a long time. I'm running for council again because I have really enjoyed my time here. We've made a huge difference. We have changed a lot of what the three of us that are incumbents ran with the same ideas and we have accomplished those, and proud to say that we have done that. It takes a little time to get used to this and feel comfortable with this and know all of, well, I'll never know all of, but to know a lot of what goes on. But now I want to continue what I know that will really continue to benefit everybody by having that experience behind me. So that's why I'm running and I do, I love it, I enjoy it. It's hard, but it's very rewarding.
Thank you. Nina. Kim, sorry.
I'm Kim Dixon and my husband Ken and I recently celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary on October 5th. I grew up in Plain City, he grew up in West Weaver, so we are lifelong residents of Weber County. We moved to West Haven in 2001. We raised our family in West Weaver, but we have, and we have four children and 12 amazingly perfect grandchildren. Ken retired as a battalion chief with the Weaver Fire District and I retired as an operations manager with the IRS after 36 years. My expertise, I feel, is in budget and staffing. In 2018, I, along with Carrie and Nina, became concerned about the rapid growth in West Haven and I decided to take a step out of my comfort zone and run for city council because I tell you, it is a step out of your comfort zone and I applaud anybody who's willing to step forward and do it. Even after almost four years on the city council, there's not a week that goes by that I don't learn something new. I've enjoyed working with our council, with our staff. I'm so excited about the future of West Haven. There's a lot of things that we're planning that will be coming to fruition in the next few years and I decided to run for reelection.
Thank you.
I'm Clarence Kelly. I grew up in, well, born in Ogden, raised in Roy, so been here in Weber County most of my life. Went to Roy High School, graduated from there, went on to Weber State where I got a degree in mechanical engineering. From there, that took us up to the state of Washington. By the way, I married Madonna, my high school sweetheart, and took her away from her family, which they weren't very happy, but I took her away up to Washington where I worked for the Boeing Company up there and got into the aerospace industry. We were up there for 10 years and then when we moved back, we moved here to West Haven. We have four children, all married now, and five grandchildren. I am currently working for Lockheed Martin at Hill Air Force Base where I continue to work as an aerospace engineer, lead engineer on the F-16 program. We love West Haven. We've been involved ever since we got here. Our children immediately got involved in the youth city council and we were therefore involved also in all that the youth city council does. We've continued to get involved with the city and help in any way that we can and we will continue to do that. We believe in serving. We believe if you're going to make a difference, you start with your home, you branch out to your neighborhood and then to your entire community. From there, you can keep branching if you've got enough, enough clout, I guess you could say. But anyway, that's why I'm running. I do feel that, that we can make still some improvements, that we can still become a more unified city and I think that's important, that everybody feels welcome. Many have come in, the population has grown astronomically, but they need to feel welcome. They need to know that they're part of West Haven. And yet we still need to maybe slow things down a little.
Thank you, Clarence.
Hi, I'm Jim McGregor. I've been a lifelong resident of Weber County. My roots in Weber County go back to 1850 with my great-great-grandfather. Came and settled in Riverdale. I grew up in South Ogden, went to Bonneville High School, met my wife, she's a girl from Hooper, and she wanted horses and so when it came time to look for our second home, we found West Haven to be very amenable to horse property and so we bought an acre and we have the horse in the backyard, which is financially advantageous to me. I'm running for city council for two main reasons. I believe strongly in civic service, giving back to the community, and I believe in ballot choice. Had I not filed to run, there would be a lack of challengers and so we would not have had an even election in that case. So I get very frustrated when I get my mail-in ballot and there's one name on the block to choose from. And so I do believe it's important that, at the very least, the citizens of the community have a choice in the election. Like many residents of West Haven, we've seen the rapid growth out here. I think the current administration's done a really great job in trying to wrangle that and get that under control and I think they're doing the right thing by opening the general plan and getting public comment there. It's a tough challenge, it is the penultimate challenge of the city is growth, so I'm sure we'll hear more about that tonight.
Thank you. Nina.
First, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and thank you to everyone who is attending both in person and online, as well as the candidates here who have chosen to run, I appreciate that. My name is Nina Morse, I am a current city council member. I ran for election four years ago. Four years ago, I sat up here and talked to residents in the same kind of format here and discussed what my plans were for the city. Obviously, growth has been the biggest challenge to West Haven and that was something that I ran on at the time and worked tirelessly with my fellow council members to curtail that growth, to change ordinances so that we could slow things down, so that we could quit putting up high-density apartments where they shouldn't be, and try to bring West Haven back to West Haven. That's what I've done for the last three years, three and a half years. I also worked very hard to bring fiber internet to West Haven and you see that going in now and, of course, yards are getting torn up and I apologize for that, but it brings accessibility to all of the residents and I'm grateful for that. Also brought the garbage contract that many of you are saving money on now with garbage services. Lastly, I'll just say, went to school at Weber State, have two degrees from Weber State, I'm head of communications at Northrop Grumman, an aerospace and defense company, and I have three children that I'm raising here in this great city and I just want to keep doing what I'm doing on the council and continue the positive changes that we've seen in the last four years, so thank you.
And I guess I should tell you too, Sharon Hilton is ill and let me know. She tried, but I said, "No, thank you, don't come here if you're sick." So she's, it's not that she just didn't show up, she did answer the Vote 411 questions. So if you don't know her and you'd like to know a little bit about her background, go into Vote411.org and put your name, your address in and you'll see hers pop up. Okay, we'll start this time with Kim. With the continued growth, which I think you're number three in the state, yeah?
I am.
Yeah, it's amazing to me, but with the continued growth in West Haven, what specific suggestions do you bring to the table on how to maintain the same atmosphere that the people in West Haven are used to having?
Well, I found out pretty quickly when I was elected last time that everything starts with zoning. And if you don't have the correct zoning in place, you are required to approve what comes in. So we've worked really hard to change the zoning in some areas and make it so that we are building in the right places, building the right things in the right places. One of the, we are opening the general plan, as Jim said, we're really excited to get your input. The general plan's been open before, but I'm not sure that a lot of people knew what it was or even what it was about or how to have input. I think we've done a really good job in trying to get it out to you and show you what it is and how you can participate. What we want is intelligent growth. As I said, we know we have a beautiful place to live, we're not building a big fence around the city and saying that you can't come in, but we are saying, where does it make sense to put certain things? And I think that as a council, we've looked really hard at that, we continue to look hard at that, to make sure that we can keep West Haven as we love it.
Thank you. Clarence.
Well, once again, we do know that growth is a hot topic and I think as much as we may wish that we could stop it, we certainly can't. Landowners have rights and they have rights to develop land, but as a city, that's our job to plan it out, plan the city out in the way that we would like to see it and then make sure the zoning matches what that plan that's put forth. And so that would be the key. As far as other things, what can we do to slow the growth? Because you can't stop it, maybe you can slow it. Legally, I don't know all that there is to know legally about that. I have some ideas, some thoughts that I usually just throw out and we could find out if it's legal or not, but I think there are some things we can do to slow the growth and so that's what I would propose, is that we look at all avenues. Let's find out what is out there, what's available and what can we do to just slow it down. If you look at the population growth of West Haven, you can Google it, and there's one for 2023. It shows how this, how our population has grown and it's just speed, it's going skyrocket. And you follow that chart and it predicts that our growth will be up to almost 60,000 by the year 2028. And so we can't continue on this state, the same steep trend, somehow we've got to bring it back to where it was before.
Thank you. Jim?
Growth is the challenge. A little more pragmatic about it when I think about it, speak about it. As Clarence mentioned, you know, landowners have rights and that farmland is probably, unfortunately, not going to remain farmland forever. I did ask the question when the ombudsman was, gave his lecture a couple weeks ago about what are specific strategies we could enact to preserve agricultural land and unless the owners are willing to maintain that agricultural land, it's going to be a challenge to keep it in green space, unfortunately. We'd all like to see that, of course. Specifically, I think, as mentioned before, the general plan and sticking to the zoning is a key strategy to trying to corral that growth into some level of sanity. And the general plan becomes the shield and protection to the city council so that they can't always say, "Hey, this zoning is not according to the general plan." And so I think it's important to definitely make sure that general plan is set and is within accordance of the vision of the city.
Thank you. Nina.
Yeah, so I would agree with Jim here. I think the general plan is one of the most important documents that we have in the city and it provides the guidebook for our city and what it should look like. And it's imperative that we have a city council who follows that general plan. So public input, very important when updating that general plan and then, of course, your elected officials are extremely important in making sure that that general plan is followed. That's something that we've been doing the last three and a half years as a city council. We opened up the general plan a few times already and made some adjustments there, especially when, in adding, you know, A1 and A2 to areas of the city and removing some of that higher-density zoning that we saw four years ago, five years ago. That was really important and I think it's helped slow the growth down quite a bit. And Clarence had mentioned the trajectory or the projection of what West Haven looks like. We, as a city council, have the ability to change that trajectory and we certainly will with the right people sitting up here, so it's important to make sure we pay attention to that.
Carrie?
I think it's almost a broken record we'll talk about the general plan because that is the living document of the city that's going to provide that direction, that guide, and it's important to look that over as things change and you may recognize that, okay, let's look at it again, maybe this will be a better area for whatever it might be, that it's not set in stone as this is always the way it's going to be because things will come to our city that might make sense. Along with the general plan, we've amended several of those ordinances of the zones within that plan, what can go there, how big can they be, and the density. So I think that that's really important to continue to review those as we come along. It's been great to open the plan and doing a very thorough review of the general plan right now is going to bring some great, great guidance for us. I agree with Nina that we do need a council that's going to do that. I think it's important to have a council that's unified. We certainly aren't going to share the same, exact same opinion or ideas, but when we have the same general goal, we can accomplish that a lot easier and I think that's an important part of a council.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with Jim, or Clarence, sorry. I'm getting into mixed up. Clarence, do you feel, in your opinion, that there is a sufficient tax base to fund a city? What would you change?
So, the tax base has been sufficient. And once again, kudos to the leadership that has been in place and the budgets that they've put in place and sticking to those budgets. So it has been, but the city's growing, so will it continue to be is the question. So, once again, funding for the city, you bring in funds in different ways and certainly a city tax is something that I think everybody wants to avoid and it is something that I would avoid, but it doesn't mean that we won't reach that point. Obviously, if the city continues to grow, we would reach a point when the existing funds just simply aren't enough and we, so, but before we go there, before we go to any kind of a city tax, I would think we would want to look at every other avenues and ways that we bring revenue into the city, look at those first, see how we can make improvements with each of those and then down the road, if it's just not enough, then we just have no choice at that point. But until then, we need to look at all avenues.
Thank you. The real Jim?
So it's been my understanding that we've successfully funded the city budget with commercial and business and development fees. As Clarence mentioned, a property tax is most likely inevitable in the coming years. Excuse me. I was talking to a neighbor who's a business owner and he said, "It's not fair or right that we should fund the entire city on the backs of the businesses." And, you know, as a business owner, that, you know, taxes are a sensitive thing too. What I think is going to push us over the edge will be our sheriff annual contract costs. Our population growth will push the sheriff's bill probably too high at one point and push us into a property tax situation. I would hope to avoid it as long as possible, but I think it's delaying the inevitable.
Nina?
Yeah, I feel like as someone who has been looking at the budget for the last three and a half years, I've had that opportunity, being on the council, that we, as a city, have an extremely healthy budget. We've had an extremely healthy budget the entire time I've been on the council. I'm grateful to work with other council members who understand the importance of taxpayer dollars and I think as a council, we've worked really hard to ensure that we're using those taxpayer dollars wisely. I don't know how long commercial business will sustain the city, but as it goes right now, it's very healthy-looking and we have more commercial business coming in. Just saw a gas station open up this week. Finally able to capture some of that money here in West Haven instead of folks going up the road into Roy and getting their gas and other things, so I'm grateful for that. We've got some more coming online and as a council, it's our job to continue watching that and making sure that that budget stays healthy and then at some point, if need be, take other, take another look at other ideas and see if we need to find... and, and see if we need to find other ways to fund the city. But right now, we look good.
Okay. Carrie?
I, I agree with everyone here that, you know, we have businesses. We certainly have been helping, we've, we are, we do have a healthy budget. Our commercial base is good and it is, it is growing. As a council member, very cognizant of, of those taxpayer dollars. And when the department heads come and present what they need at our budget meetings, they don't always get everything that they want. But we try to accommodate that. We're looking, what do we have, what's coming, where can we use it? So I think at the moment, we do have a sufficient tax base. We, we, we're going to evaluate that every year. So we can't say when we would need more until we're at that point of, okay, now how are we going to do this? Forward thinking, we have a very proactive mayor who wants to go find those businesses to, to bring them to us. So we're active in trying to create and keep that commercial tax base.
Well, the last one always just repeats what everyone else has said. We do have a really healthy budget. I was talking to our accountant recently and he said that we are one of the best fiscally run cities that he services. So we do, we do really understand that we are the keepers of the city's budget. That we are the ones who say, okay, we need this or we need that. Right now, we are doing really, really well. And for me, I think we will continue to do well. We're looking for economic development to come in, for more of those dollars that you brought in by business in the right places in the city. I do agree that if there comes a time where we need to make a decision about the sheriff or the police or our police department, that will be one of the things that's going to drive us into a property tax. So we're very cognizant of what your feelings are about the safety in West Haven and how we best meet that. So again, every year, we go through the budget line by line. It's excruciating at sometimes and, but when we come out, we feel that we have the best budget that we can from West Haven.
Thank you. In your opinion, are you, are, are there areas that you feel West Haven needs to address in reference to safety? And what are they and what do you suggest?
Great question. I would say as a 20-year citizen of West Haven, the sheriff has done an admirable job with maintaining safety and security. I think a lot of people who experience crime think that, rather I should say, I think people have an oversized thought that crime is worse than it actually is. I actually dug into the FBI crime statistics on West Haven at one point in time and started making some Excel graphs of violent crime and property crime to, to see what the truth was out there. Because what you hear on Facebook is not really what is accurate on the ground. And so, so first of all, you have, kudos to the sheriff for doing a great job. I've, I felt safe. I have been a victim of crime in West Haven. I've had packages stolen on my porch, had my car stolen out of my garage. But you know what? One, two incidences in 20 years, I'll take it, right? But as far as what needs to be addressed, traffic seems to be becoming an increasingly fast and furious problem in West Haven. And I, and I honestly, anecdotally, I've seen fewer sheriff vehicles out on the main thoroughfares lately. But I think traffic would probably be the number one thing that probably needs to be addressed with, in terms of law enforcement.
As far as areas of safety that need to be addressed, I think we've been doing that pretty well the last several years. I saw that, I felt like it was an issue when I was running for city council. And, and maybe, you know, like Jim said, see things on Facebook, think it's probably worse than what it really is. So when I came into this seat, one of the things I wanted to do was improve relationships with Weaver County Sheriff's Office. And I started with the sheriff himself. And I've gone on ride-alongs with the Street Crimes Unit. Most people probably don't know what the Street Crimes Unit is, but it's a crime unit here in West Haven that hits up mostly areas of concern in the city at the right times of night usually. Those guys are out there every single night, patrolling, trying to get busts. They've been very successful and they've really cleaned up the area around Flying J, which has been really great. So I've rode with them, we've brought in flock cameras. We're putting them all over the city to help catch criminals when they come into our city with stolen vehicles or whatever it is. Or they've done something here and we find them on a flock camera. And then again, I've just been working to improve relationships. I see a lot of improvement so far and I think we can continue that. The sheriff's office has been really great, they've been patrolling more and they really understand our concerns.
I was going to mention flock cameras because that's something new that has been implemented and, and done well. And so we improved more, so we could put them in more areas of the city and the sheriff has greatly appreciated that, that's helped them in their efforts. What first came to my mind is because yesterday at our meeting, we're working on our sidewalk study to decide where in our city are we lacking or there's not a connection that could be missing. And the first thing, as we're going over these, was my priority was the kids. We have several areas that go through the schools and I think everybody was in agreeance that we need to have a safe place for our children to walk. So there are those areas that we'll see that improvement. And the, the state recognizes that for we gather safe sidewalk grants and be able to create a better, better place for our kids to be walking. The VIZ program, I think, is kind of not as much in the limelight as it could be because that does help us as well. Because we have those volunteers that will go throughout the city and just kind of keep tabs and see what's happening and let the sheriff know if there's some concerns. Wish that more people would join that and promote that. The city does try to promote it, but I think that's a great program to aid us in our, in our record of safety.
As Carrie said, one of the things that we've been really cognizant of is the three new schools that are going to be opening. One, excuse me, one in Taylor and two in West Haven. We have a, a large sidewalk study that we have asked for that will tell us about the sidewalks. There are, it's many pages long and it tells us in a priority which ones need to be done first. One of those is already funded, it's going to be started. But again, with the new schools opening up, one of our first concerns is safety for our children as they walk to school. Another thing that will be coming are lights. We've worked really hard on traffic lights that will be coming to assist us in 4,000 South and 5,100 West where the school will be on 5,100 West. I am proud to say 1,800 South and 1,900 West, which has been one of my big concerns because I, in the north part of the city, you take your life in your hands when you try to get across 1,800 South and 1,900 West in, in the evening or in the mornings. But we look at it very, very carefully. We look at it in an organized, approached manner and we will do those sidewalks as we can fund them. And so safety of our children has been one of our biggest concerns.
Once again, I've, I've been very happy with the sheriff's department and I do think they do a great job. Safety is always needs to be first. And so many of the comments that have been mentioned have been great comments. And I, in fact, that focus on the safety for our children should be number one. And, and in fact, you absolutely have to come up with the funding for that. It's really not a good excuse to ever say, well, we didn't have the funds and then we have an accident, someone gets hurt or seriously injured. And so you just can't allow that to happen. You have to find the funds for these things. So safety has to be first. I do think we can make some improvements with traffic as well. And maybe speed limits, ways to just slow things down. It, it is amazing how just a simple little speed limit sign that flashes your speed will actually help people slow down. So simple things like that will work to help with, with safety as well. So I, I think those are important and we need to make sure those are, are being put in place. I love, love the way we can work with the sheriff's department. We need to continue to do that. We need to help in any way that we can. So even neighborhood watch programs throughout our neighborhoods, things like that that we can do to help with, with the safety of our community.
Thank you. What are your plans to reduce the city's budget dependence on developer fees? What are your plans to reduce the city's budget dependence on developer fees?
I don't know that the city is very dependent on developer fees. We've seen a tremendous decline in the last three and a half years on development in the city. And yet still have an extremely healthy budget. Again, we, you know, depend a lot on these commercial businesses coming in. We see a lot of, we see that tax revenue increase year after year. And that's really been a big part of keeping our budget healthy. It hasn't been developer fees. If I had it my way, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have developer fees because we wouldn't have a whole lot of development. So my, my plan would be to continue focusing on economic development and not residential development. And I mean, that's it really.
Thank you. Carrie?
I feel the same as Nina. And again, back to what we, I said about the budget earlier. As we're looking at it each and every year, what are our needs, what are our wants? And we're going to have to be a little lean and think if we're not having the fees come in and we have all of these years, where, where can we make some change? I feel like we've made an effort and we had a great community development director who went over a lot of things and discovered where we're lacking and we could actually, our, our fee schedule wasn't enough. Or we're looking at an impact fee study. What, what is it that the city needs? So I think having those resources and going over the, the possibilities will help in this way because we won't always have those developer fees and we've had less and less of them. But we're still maintaining a healthy budget and being able to provide the programs and the things for our community to have great events, a great recreation program. So I think as we continue to look at and make sure our fees are in line because for a lot of years they were not. So as those continue to change, I think we'll be able to, to provide for, for everyone.
Well, I brought the, oh, sorry.
You're fine.
I brought our budget for the fiscal year '24 and I thought it would be interesting for us to point out that for fiscal year '24, our sales and use tax, franchise taxes, our miscellaneous taxes, are $6.12 million with $6.192 million, which is a 25% increase over 2023. And our license and permits are down by 36%. They're down to 1.4 million. And even with that being said, we are in a great fiscal shape. We understand that the permits and the development fees will not be here forever. But for right now, we are able to keep up with our general sales and use tax, most taxes, and rely less on the development fees. As Nina said, we do not want to be relying on development fees. That means that in order to keep the budget going, you have to have development, development communities. So we are very cognizant of where our income's from and how it's going.
Well, once again, everything's a balance. And so anytime you're looking at revenue coming in and you need to look at where it's coming from and you need to make decisions. It's been kind of obvious, it sounds like most everybody wants to slow the development. Once again, not stop it, but slow it. And so, yeah, you absolutely cannot depend on those fees. Our, our goal is to slow it, then we, that's, we're, we're taking that revenue away. So the, the key is the increase, obviously with the economical development, yet slow down the residential development. And then, of course, hoping that that economic development does increase the taxes, sales taxes that come into the, into the city and that that makes up for the losses in the, the money that would come in from those developer fees. But once again, there's always a balance. You gotta be crunching numbers as an engineer, that's what I do all the time, every day. Always looking into the details of things, crunching numbers, looking at the balance of things and making sure that we make the right decision based on all of the input. And, and so we just have to look at all the ways that, that revenue is coming into the city and, and make good, smart decisions to, to keep a healthy budget and healthy revenue.
It is a life cycle that a city goes through. We're currently probably getting a lot of revenue from business, uh, resident development fees through the building of new homes and apartments and townhomes. But as that development starts to slow, as land gets built out, it'll be a natural shift because the growth will attract more commercial business. And I'm old enough to remember when there was no restaurants in West Haven. And now we have a pizza place and a Mexican place there on 4,000. I mean, the very first things we've seen the whole time I've been here. So I foresee that the expanded commercial businesses will be attracted by our population. We'll continue to see that and that will probably balance out the loss of, of development fees and that revenue will shift to commercial.
Okay, thank you. What would you suggest for possible flood damage due to runoff and groundwater? What would you suggest? Nina starts, so it's Carrie.
Well, yesterday's agenda, we had, we had this item to, to update a policy that had been not looked at in quite a long time to make sure they come in, in compliance with code. And that will allow residents, when they, when there are these kind of natural events happen, because we have this ordinance in place, they are able to make claims or, or file for those things that they need to. If we didn't have that, they would kind of be stuck. I don't really have much more to say on flood damage.
Thank you.
I agree with Carrie. Yesterday, we went through our, and these are long conversations for me because I don't really understand how pipes work, whether they're this big or this big. But we are making sure that we are in compliance with code and we are going through, our engineers going through everything and making sure that our, our, what do I want to say? Sorry, that word just left me, so I'll try to find another one. That we are compliant with all of the things that will keep this from happening. So that we have the drains and we have, that will flow away. Again, floodwater is not basically my thing. We live by the ri, we live by the river and I watched the river last year as it went up and up and up and up and our city watched it really closely. Luckily, we did not have to worry about flooding homes because we are kind of a far piece away from the river. But again, we don't know what natural disasters will be. We can just be prepared, be prepared as possible.
It's funny that we're talking about flooding when we've just gone through this drought where we've been praying for rain. But the rain finally came and the snow finally came. So flooding, as well as really any disaster that might hit our city, we just need to be prepared. So the question is, what do we have in place already? Do we have an emergency preparedness plan for the city? If we don't, then that's the first thing we need to do is we need to get on that. Second, if we do, how, how up to date is it? I know how emergency plans can be, we put them in place and then they're in place and then can't forget about them. Well, that would be something that would just have to be on our plate all the time. You'd have to always be looking. So you have to put a plan in place and then you have to keep that plan up to date. And so that's what I would suggest. And then flooding, of course, would just be one of those things that are part of this plan and that we would keep an eye on, on that and then talk about, be prepared for it when it comes and talk about how we can prevent, help prevent it as well. But all that would be part of an emergency preparedness plan that, that I would think that, that we would have to put in place. Whether I'm in or not, I think we need to have that in place.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Solid engineering as developments are, are planned. As Carrie mentioned, we want to As Carrie mentioned, we want to make sure the engineering is very, very solid on that. It seems that I see more retention ponds getting added to developments, not just in our area, but in many different areas. That flooding, flood planning is now more of a thing than it used to be. And we can never say it's not gonna happen. When I was, our first year in our home, our, our basement flooded over in West Haven. And it was, it was a, it was an eye opener. And so we, we took some, in our, of our own actions to mitigate that for the future. But we should absolutely make sure that our flood is in the USL. I really appreciate that the city council went through and designated those flood, flood zones to protect homeowners and allow them to make claims. I think that's, that's excellent.
Yeah, so I'm not going to reiterate what Carrie and Kim just said, because you already heard that. But I do wanna talk to you about, most people don't realize this, but before I served on the city council, I served on the West Haven Special Services District, which is essentially the sewer district. And during my time there, there was some flooding that occurred, I think in Far West, because people had sump pumps directly into the, the drains in their homes instead of out to the streets like they're supposed to be. At that time, the Special Services District took a very proactive approach and wrote a new ordinance that required all developers to either install land drains in every new development and/or, they could do both if they wanted, but at least land drains or sump pump roughens in every house that they built. And I was very grateful to be on the, the district at the time and, and help pass that because I thought it was very important legislation for the city, for the residents, for new residents coming into the city. And, and it's probably, hopefully, been extremely helpful.
Okay, we'll start with Kim. How do you project getting public input for the general plan?
I mentioned this a little bit. We have gone out with flyers, mailers for people to look at the general plan. I left those little things that you can just take a picture of and it will take you to the, the site. You will be hearing more about that from us. We will have open houses, several where you can come in and look at the general plan and be able to give your feedback. Again, we are looking for your feedback in the general plan because you are West Haven and we can't do a general plan without you. So there will be a concentrated effort to make sure that we can get public input. So watch out for that.
Well, kinda not much sure, not sure to say what more we can do on top of that. I do think the city is making great effort and I've been impressed with what they've done so far. The mailer came to our home. I know we went in and we filled it out. We put in our input for the general plan. In the end, we can only do so much and the city can only do much, so much. So I, I like what they have in mind. I like the, and I would say continue with that for sure. I like the idea of having open meetings where people can come and discuss it. I like the idea of a committee, putting together that committee that was brought up in city council about a month ago. Forming a committee to, to represent the, the citizens and to give input. And so I, I think that that's important to continue with that and just keep reaching out. I think as far as us and everyone here, reach out, talk to your neighbor about it, encourage them. Let them know that, that their input is needed. If they, once again, this is your chance to let the city leadership know what you want this city to look like. So if you sit back and don't do anything, then you have to live with whatever decisions are made. So I think, once again, everybody needs to reach out to your neighbors and encourage them to, to fill that out.
Yeah, it sounds like this is gonna all be wrapped up before, you know, the newcomers would have an opportunity to, to be involved in getting the word out. I will say, the city's done a phenomenal job in the PR on this. If you haven't heard about the general plan input, you're living under a rock. Because I, I've been getting hit by mail, I went to the website, it's, it's all over. So, yeah, now's the time. If, it's, this is the time to, to get your concerns baked into that plan, your feelings baked into that plan, let your feelings known on that. Because that, once that general plan is closed again, it's, it's kind of settled for quite a long time, is my understanding. And, but again, it becomes the city's protection when developers show up and say, I wanna put, you know, a hundred townhomes on this farm land. Go, go put your input on that plan.
Wow, I'm glad that Jim just said what he said because it's true. I mean, this, I think the city's done a phenomenal job of trying to promote what we're trying to do here with the general plan. I mean, the mailers have been really great. There's been information on Facebook. There's just been a lot of information put out and a lot of opportunity put out. And honestly, I mean, there's nothing I love more than public input. So if you've never sat through a council meeting with me when we've had a lot of people in here giving input on something, I personally make a lot of decisions legally based on the input that the residents give. And so it's very important that our residents are giving input on the general plan, that they are responding to those mailers and getting online and, and giving their input. And then, of course, you know, having the opportunity for people to come in here to the city and look at the general plan in those meetings and give input there as well. Also gives, you know, the council and the mayor time to, an opportunity to hear from the residents face to face, which I think is always a, a good opportunity anyway. So that would be my thoughts. Great comments.
Carrie.
I think everybody's covered it. But I think this council has worked really hard to be transparent and it's been important to have public hearings, open houses in particular, to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to share their thoughts or their ideas. You know, we have put it out on Facebook, on the website, in the newsletter.
YouTube.
Yes, and we put it on a, they, they had somebody at West Haven Days, you know, there to catch people that are walking by, here, here's some information, here's a QR code. Right, that makes it easy for a lot of people, they can do it on their own time and it's right there. They just put, put their phone on it. But the, the committee, I think, is a great idea, a great starter. And that has been suggested and we're working towards it being very diverse. We have those that have lived here a long time, those that haven't, those with young kids, those retired, those, like a, quite a diverse group that will probably have some different views or ideas and input. And that's what we want. We don't want the same narrative. We wanna see what other ideas come from, different areas of the city and different ages, where they're at in their lives, so.
Okay, thank you. How do you, how do you suggest the mix for low, medium, and high density? Buildings, we'll just say buildings, not necessary housing, should be done. How do you suggest the mix of low, medium, and high should be represented? Percentage wise or where it should be?
Really, that, once again, that's a great question. So as far as the mix, I, I believe that West Haven has the mix. And so when I think of, like, for example, subdivisions with larger lots, one acre lots, maybe, maybe even as small as half acre. But there are a lot of people that do want, want that, that want. But if developers aren't building it, if they're only doing high density, if they're only doing small lots, then the people that want that are gonna go elsewhere. The West Haven won't be even an option for them. And so we need to make sure that, that we're providing that option as well and not just the high density option. And so I, in my mind, I believe West Haven's done their part on, on high density housing. And, and they've tried to put it in places that, that they felt were, were the best locations. So my, I would be proposing more that we, we look to, to, to get away from the high density and focus more on the larger lots and, and provide some housing like that for people that want to move in West Haven with, with that in mind. So that's kind of where, the way I feel about it.
It is, it's my understanding that, as Clarence mentioned, we've built a lot of high density. And it's been clustered over on the east side of the city, closer to our transportation corridors, front runner, I fifteen. It's my understanding that that amount of high density that's already been built out has satisfied the requirement for, for quite a long time. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. Should intention, should free us up to be able to now provide perhaps more larger lot sizes to single, for the single family homes for those that are looking for that. The housing market is an absolute challenge. I could not afford to buy my own home and, and land right now if I was buying it at, at the current market rate. So it is, is a challenge for families, it's a challenge for residents and, and people wanna live here. And even the high density stuff is wickedly expensive and it's really unfortunate. And that's, but we believe in free markets, so we can't, we're not, we can't tell people what to set their prices at. So the market's gonna be literally, and, but yes, I think, as Clarence mentioned, we could stand to look at more spread out density going forward.
I hate to sound like a broken record. Great group of people up here, obviously. I do believe that West Haven has done its fair share of providing high density housing in this city. I, more than its fair share, in my opinion. I would like to see us focus, if developers wanna come in and build here, I would like to see us focus more on some larger lots. It's currently very easy to find a house in West Haven on point one five acres. It's very difficult to find a house in West Haven on one and a half acres because they're just not available. And I know this because I have tried to buy a house in West Haven on a larger lot and it's very difficult because they're not building them. I think that focusing the medium density in the transportation corridors closer to the main roads works. And then, of course, as you move away from that, it should be higher density. And I, I think that the, the council has tried to do that with the general plan, tried to find the right places for the lower density projects and keep the medium density where they need to be. And, and again, at low density, I mean, we've just, we've done more than our fair share and, and the legislature will probably keep fighting us on it.
In the last meet the candidate thing, I said what Clarence said. I feel like we have a great opportunity that we've created spaces for these higher density, medium density. But it's not fair to not allow those that would be larger. For those that want to find them, they can't find them. And maybe they're not being built at the moment, but we have them as availability, that we don't change the zone. Like, we're preserving them, just like we wanna preserve commercial. So high density belongs in the, in the right place, which is the major corridors. Some of that has snuck a little bit further to the west, which we can't take back. And so putting it in the right place is the most, most important. We, when we redid the zones, we also created buffers. When we first put those in, we said, let's not have these high density. Now looking over what was now somebody's single family, there needed to be more space. So we created a buffer between the differing lots of what you have to have next to the, the current one, the existing lot. And I think that that was helpful to provide options for those that, you know, want this and can try to appease as many as we can.
I agree with everyone. I think we have done more than our fair share of diversity housing in West Haven. I think of the smaller cities, we have by far the most townhomes, apartments, and houses on smaller acreage. But again, we go back to zoning. And I can't count the number of developers that have come to us and said, oh, we want to build this, it will be perfect here. It's gonna be great, we're gonna have this and this and this. And we have said, no, it doesn't fit in our city. And that is why the general plan is so important. We have the zoning in place to say, I'm sorry. And we do that through the general plan and we do that through zoning. And we can make that choice right now.
Thank you, as I choked to death. Excuse me, if you were elected, what would be your very first priority to take a look at? We'll start with Jim.
Oh, is it starting with me?
Unless you want to be Clarence.
For me, the, the first priority is to, is to really lay a budget and see, kind of get a lay of the land and understand, and understanding the, the ins and the outs, where we're at fiscally, financially. I think that is one of the primary, you know, driving reasons for city council is to make those budgetary decisions. So for me, it'd be gaining an understanding of budget would be top priority. Honestly, I'm gonna use my time to, to kind of praise the things that have been done in the city so far. The fiber, love it. The garbage contract, love it. We, if there were more opportunities to more projects like that, I would totally be on board. I don't care they rip my yard up, I'll take that conduit in my ground any day. I just can't wait for it to finally get wired up. So if we could accelerate that process, it would be great. So, yeah, priority for me would be budget, but I really want, you know, wanna thank the, the cool things that have been done so far. And, and thank you for the fiber.
Thank you for saying that. Yeah, so one of the first things I would do if I was reelected is to continue the work that I'm doing, obviously. We have budget season coming up and so it makes sense, for me anyway, that that would be the first thing that I would be looking at is the budget because it, it is on its way. We are currently without a city manager right now, so I'd like to see us work on getting that position replaced. That's very important when it comes to running the day to day operations of the city. Currently, we're leaning on two other people to do that and it's been tough. I would also like to see us continue work on our strategy. It's something that the mayor put into place when he first became elected. It's something that we need to continue looking at and seeing how that changes. We've got the general plan situation going on at the end of the year and so we need to, as a council, sit down and look at that and, and make sure our zoning matches what, what you all have decided we need for the city. And, and so we've gotta work on that as well. And, and I thank you again, Jim, for saying what you said about the fiber internet because I do think that was an important project, so thank you.
I, I would say the same as Nina, to continue what we're doing, to keep, to keep things going and the trajectory that they have, the improvements that we have made. I think it's important to go back to what you had said, our strategic goals. Every year, we're gonna look at those and see, did we do well? Do we need to change? Do we need to improve? What, what direction are we headed? That we reevaluate that at the beginning of every year. So we're set on a path and we follow that through that year. I, I've said it before and I'll, and I'll say again that I think that I would like to continue trying to get residents involved. You know, how, how can you find meetings? How can you attend meetings? How can you get notified of meetings or those things that are going on? And continue to ask staff to, to post things. I ask them to continually have a repeating event so that council meeting comes up as a reminder on Facebook. It's streamed, that was an important thing to, to Nina, Kim, I'll feel comfortable saying for both of them. That was a huge part of what we wanted to accomplish, to make it accessible to everybody and transparent. You can see what's going on and can view from your home, you know, if you're not here, which is the usual case. Not many people are here. But we hope that they're watching. And then they send those emails, we get emails about things that were discussed in the meeting. So I would, I would love to continue what we're doing.
I agree again with Nina and Carrie. But one thing that I am excited about is our plans for our staff. We have the greatest staff out there. They are dedicated employees, they are, they love West Haven as much as we do. We're currently doing a performance plan with physician descriptions. We're currently doing a performance plan with position descriptions to give them a pay rate, a pay range, so that we can make sure that they're paid comparable to other people in their positions. We want to keep our employees, they are great. I think we have some great ideas going forward, and that would be something that I would concentrate on.
For me, the number one priority would be general plan and zoning. I would have to catch up the speed right away on that, what we're at. I don't think it'll necessarily be done before the end of the year. It might be, but there's still a lot to do between now and then, so I would think that I would be very much involved in that. Making sure that the infrastructure is matching, all of that as well, and that we're looking ahead, looking when that develop would happen, and making sure the infrastructure is being put in place. And of course, safety, safety, emergency preparedness, those types of things have always got to be high up there on the priority list as well. So that's something that I think we would need to look at as well as a city, and make sure that we're ready for that. And then, of course, none of that, any of that happens if we don't have the budget and the funding for it, so that would always have to be a top priority as well, to make sure that we can fund the things that we want to see in the city.
Thank you. Okay, you have one and a half minutes to tell us why we should vote for you. Start with Nina.
Well, I think you should vote for me, because I've spent the last four years working very hard to change the trajectory of the city. We were on a path that wasn't healthy, it wasn't good, the residents were dissatisfied. There were things we needed in the city, garbage contract, obviously, one of those things, fiber internet, of course, but we needed a lot of stability here in the, in city hall, we needed it in our building situation, economic growth, our development. The city just needed a lot of stability, and I've spent the last nearly four years trying to help provide that. I'm up to speed on everything, I'm ready to just continue doing what I have been doing. I want to continue being the transparent council that we are. I don't think anybody up here would disagree with being non-transparent anyway, but I just want to keep doing what we're doing. I'm very excited about the future of the city, and I've enjoyed my time serving this community and getting to know all of you, and I think we've got a bright future ahead.
Thank you. Kerry?
I, I would love to continue to be your voice. That was something that was important to me when I first ran, because I felt unheard, and it's been enjoyable to get to know many residents, to be involved in issues or concerns or needing information. I have answered all those emails. I enjoy reaching out to others to figure out what can we do. If I, if I don't know, of course, we go to the staff and the city manager, and we come back with some solutions, or bring it to the council. This is something we all need to consider and do that in a, in a public meeting. So I, I would like to continue to be your voice. I feel that I have worked hard, and I'm dedicated. I, as I said in the last meeting, I'm really proud that I have not missed a meeting. I work really hard. We spend so much time, all of us spend so much time to do this, and we do sacrifice time from our family and from events. The last debate was held on my husband's birthday, and today's debate's held on my son's birthday, so they've all got delayed, and that's just what happens, we miss games, we miss events, but that's because we were voted to do this. The public's put your trust, the trust into us, and so we sacrifice our time. I feel like I understand things a whole lot better about municipal government, and I'd like to continue to use that knowledge that I've gained to make even the next four years even better, so that would be fine.
Okay, "infrastructure" was a word that I could not remember, so just so you know, somebody else said it. And that's what's great about our council, we don't all know everything, but we do know a lot, so as we work together, we work together to make sure that West Haven is the best that it can be. And again, I might not know about size of pipes, but I do know about budget. I too have enjoyed the last four years, I can't tell you how much I've learned about city government. I came on board thinking, okay, we're going to change this and this and this and this. You know, you don't do that, that's just not how it's done, but we have worked within the parameters that we've given, and I love West Haven, I love the staff of West Haven, I love the people of West Haven. I would like to continue to serve for four more years. Thank you.
Well, to start out, certainly, why me is not saying why not anybody else, just so you know. So why, why would you vote me in to serve on the city council? One, I work well with others, always have. I can, I can bring people together, I can help them to listen to each other and to work well together, and I believe I could help do that as well. And I'm not saying that they're, they're not unified right now, but unity is important. I think unity in the city is important as well, that would be a number-one focus on my part, would be to make sure that I'm representing all the residents of West Haven, and not just the ones that think the way that I do, but to represent all. And I think that's an effort to reach out, and we've seen the city making that effort with the general plan, and so that's what we would need to continue to do, reach out so that we're representing all. Let's see, I'm also very dedicated. I would be here, be here to represent, you could count on me. And even though, as was mentioned, we won't, as a group, may not know everything, I think I bring a little bit of knowledge just being an engineer. Engineers are kind of different people, and so I would add a little diversity there with the way that an engineer thinks. But those are just a small number of things, but once again, I would appreciate your support.
Regardless of the outcome of the election, I think the city is in excellent hands. Why vote for me? I believe I represent a reasonable and viable option on the ballot. Clarence and I are, have not served on the council before, and so we do lack the experience that the current council has. The incumbents have the advantage of being able to run on the record, and I understand that. But at one point in time, they were, they were the challengers at one point in time as well, so. I believe I'm, I do represent a, a good, solid choice for a city council election. I have a vast, extensive life experience, which includes overseas combat veteran experience. So I've been, I've lived in a country that had no democratic systems in place. I saw firsthand what it meant to not have democratic process in a society, and it was not pretty. And so I believe strongly in civic duty and giving back to one's community, and so my motivation here is, again, to provide a good, solid choice on your ballot. And if elected, I would serve to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, and we appreciate you being here too, and all of you online. We usually get some good hits online for, I don't know why, I don't know how they get there, but we get good hits, so. We need to give these guys a round of applause. When you put yourself out in front of the public like they do, that's a hard thing to do, so we should thank them for the efforts they have in running for an election. Thank you very much. Please go home and look at vote411.org and see who, what answers they put, what, who did or did not answer. I wanted to send another 411 link to anyone who did not answer yet, okay? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.